Unsilent for us? Alright, if you would please stand and join us for the Pledgeable Allegiance.
Pledgeable allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. This is the West Bridgewater Board of Selectmen's meeting of Wednesday, May 17th. For those of you in the room, thanks for coming. For those of you watching at home, thanks for tuning in. First item on the agenda today is Vista Motors. And Mallory, you want to give us an update?
Sure, so this is a public hearing. Vista Motors is seeking a second location at 755 North Main Street. Everything is going to remain the same as the previous location had, so your license would remain with the same restrictions that were previously approved via site plan review in that regard.
Okay, let me read the postings. Pursuant to Chapter 140 of the Mass General Law, public hearing will be held on Wednesday, May 17, 2017, at 7:00 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Town Hall, 65 North Main Street, West Bridgewater, Massachusetts, in the application for a Class II Used Car Dealership License for Vista Motors LLC to the location 755 North Main Street, West Bridgewater, Mass. Interested parties are invited to attend. Jerry Lawrence, Chairman, Board of Selectmen. This was published in the Enterprise News on May 3, 2017. Do you want a motion to open the hearing?
Yeah, motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
So just to reiterate the restrictions that would be on this license, the applicant is here today if you'd like to hear from her as well. So it's 40 spaces for auto sales and employee parking, including one handicap space or one additional. No repairs or changing of fluids to be done on the site, and that's fine. They have filed who their repair place will be, and that's all set. Vehicles must be parked per the approved plan submitted, which is included in your application packet, and no storage of junk or unregistered vehicles is allowed in the site.
Okay.
Other than that, everything is perfect with their paperwork.
Alright, does anyone have any questions? Would you all like to tell us a little bit of what you're trying to do and a little bit about your business?
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much to come today. So basically, we are selling used cars, trying to do the best out of that business, serving people from five states, from Massachusetts. We do not have our mechanics to disturb. We do our repairs in a, at a, 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 a long time. We've made, try to do the best, best we can.
And all these girls are looking for used cars. Surprise! Wouldn't it be great if we were that good of a board? Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Alright, do I have a motion to, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the license?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Very good. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright, as we always love, oh, wait, we got something else. Mallory, the Preservation Mass Water Commission Notice.
All this is, is, they're looking to do Keno there, so if you have an objection, we write something in, but if not, it just carries on.
Okay. Does this continuously require a vote, or could we vote a blanket policy to allow Keno at establishments that apply?
I, that's okay.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing the notice states is just to state whether you object or do not object, but if you want to have a blanket statement, I'm sure that you could do that.
Okay. Does anyone have any problem with that?
No, I don't have any problem.
Alright, that way we can take this off the table anytime someone applies for it. Most often it's convenience stores and whatnot, they don't even really show the numbers there or anything, and of course, we want to encourage our other businesses, so...
So moved.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Alright, we always love exciting, fun things going on in our town, and a roomful of young people is exciting, and we know this isn't our typical Selectman. We also know you're not all here to buy a used car, from the gentleman that just left, unfortunately for him, but it's very exciting to have a celebrity here in our own town. And tonight, joining us, we have Miss Massachusetts Outstanding Teen, and I understand you also hold the title of Miss Boston Outstanding Teen?
Yes.
That's very exciting. You want to let us know a little bit about the program?
So, hello, everyone. So, the Miss Massachusetts Outstanding Teen Organization is a little sister program to the Miss America Organization, so this is, holds the same ideals as the Miss America Organization. It's all about scholarship and service, and really just helping out in your community. So, as a title holder in the Miss America Organization, this July, I will be traveling to Orlando to compete for the title of Miss America's Outstanding Teen. That's very exciting. I've already gotten to meet some of the girls we'll be competing with. It's gonna be a lot of fun, and so each competition, there are a few different phases. So the first phase is interview, and that is a six-minute private interview with the panel of judges, and they can throw anything at you. They can talk about Donald Trump, they could talk about what your favorite color is, anything in between is what you will be asked, and you're supposed to come up with something right on the spot. There's also the lifestyle and fitness, and most people know this as the swimsuit competition, but in the teen program, it is just a fitness routine. We all run around, do some sit-ups, push-ups, show off our physical fitness, and that's what we do in that phase. Then there's talent. You'll see a lot of singers, dancers, some actresses doing monologues. I personally am a speed painter, and so in 90 seconds, I painted a portrait of Lucille Ball, and I'm working actually on trying to get it so I can paint her upside down for nationals. That's my next goal, and I'm working towards that little by little, and we're getting there. And then the last phase of competition is evening gown and onstage question, and so that will be another example where they will throw a question at you. My question was, if I could speak to any president, past or present, who would I speak to and why? And I said that I would want to speak to Donald Trump, because he is the current president, and he's the one who can make an impact today. And then I went on to talk, this pageant happened back in April, and so I talked about the issues in Syria, and how I thought we should get those under control, and how I thought we should have them resolved. And so that's just the overview of the actual competition itself, but there's a lot more to this organization. Like I said earlier, it's all about service, and so each contestant, whether you're competing at the local, state, or national level, has a platform. And so my platform is the Martin Richard Foundation, which is named after the youngest victim of the Boston Marathon bombings. And so his family started this foundation in his memory in order to keep his memory alive and just make sure, to spread his message of no more hurting people, peace. And so what I do is I go around helping them spread this message. Recently, I've actually visited Mrs. Moore's class in the Howard School, and we made a peace mural, just all about little messages of kindness and happiness, and it's now hanging in their cafeteria. And so what I do is just to go out and spread this message. That is the bottom line, what I try to do. And then there's also the national, the national platform, which is Children's Miracle Number Hospitals, and so I am currently in the process of planning a fundraiser for that organization. All money that I raise will be going towards Boston Children's Hospital, and so I will be having a trivia night soon in order to raise money and have a little fun while we're doing it. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Anthony, you have any questions?
I don't know. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, you have a fear of speaking in public?
No.
Right. Carly, now we have a surprise for you.
We are just so proud of you, and we wanted to show you this with the whole community, so we are going to be having a community send-off for you on the 8th of July, I'm pretty sure. Yeah, so that's gonna be exciting, and we're proud of you, and we just want to show you that. Do you like to?
Do you like to? I feel like you want to pose with yourself.
This is parade.
Yeah. Oh, wow. Oh, yeah, you're a fancy girl. Don't worry.
Kind of wish we went first, because we have a net brand for you, but Selectman Kenahan has a small presentation for you.
Proclamation and certificate of recognition, whereas Carly Fisher is a West Bridgewater resident who has devoted much time and effort to prepare for all aspects of pageant programs she has participated in. Whereas Carly Fisher has competed in and won both Miss Boston Outstanding Teen and Miss Massachusetts Outstanding Teen programs. Whereas Carly Fisher has been a supporter of the Martin Richard Foundation, and whereas Carly Fisher has represented the town of West Bridgewater throughout her numerous positive achievements. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of West Bridgewater, do hereby recognize Carly Fisher for her achievements, and do hereby declare her to be a truly remarkable West Bridgewater citizen.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Can we have a group picture together?
Of course.
One over Anthony. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the date of the parade?
July 8th at 10:00 AM at the high school.
Board, I'd like to entertain a motion that the town of West Bridgewater officially declare July 8th our day as our Miss Teen Representative here in West Bridgewater.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So declared. Congratulations. Good luck. If there's anything we can do for you for the celebration, let us know. We're happy to help out, and we won't make you all stay through the meeting. If you want to leave, you're more than welcome to.
Off to homework.
And thank you, thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you for having me.
Congratulations.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, for coming in. Carly Fisher Day, West Bridgewater. Alright, let's see. We have some appointments. David?
Sure, so before you, you have three people that have been requesting to be appointed to the cultural council, Caitlin Bell, Elizabeth Jones, and Lynn Santiago Colling.
Great news. I understand, unfortunately, a lot of people are timing out on the committee?
Yeah, we're all gonna be, we all have to be off, but one member this year.
Wow.
But, well, all of a sudden, we've been trying for quite a while to get more members, but we just haven't, thanks to Mallory.
West Bridgewater Hub, it's not me.
We tried, but we didn't get anybody.
Very good. Have you, did you all receive the applications?
Yes.
And your, your committee recommends the appointment of all three?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Are you one of them?
I am.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
I'm Caitlin Bell. Hi. I work for the Bank of America Charitable Foundation. I'm an officer with the foundation. I've worked there for seven years. I'm sort of a grantmaker. Serving Mass.
Awesome.
And I moved in, I moved to West Bridgewater about a year and a half ago.
Great. Like I tell you, one, one thing we love seeing is new faces in town, but also serving on committees, because if you look through our little town report, you'll see it's the same names over and over and over again. So it's exciting to have somebody new, someone with a great background, and I know the last few years, they've really been growing that the group, and trying to do some fundraising, and really making people aware that they even exist. So they've been doing a great job, so this just continues their mission. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Board, have any questions?
I don't. Thank you for volunteering.
Thanks.
We appreciate it.
One, one sent me an email late this afternoon because she had to work late. She was going to school. She couldn't make it.
I personally know Lynn Santiago Colling, and she's very involved in the community, and...
Right, and she wants to be, and she apologized that something came up, that she couldn't make it, so...
I'll entertain a motion to appoint all three.
So moved to appoint.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you to the ladies who will be getting off the committee. The state sets a limit on how many years they can serve, and so this will be the expiration of their time, and looking forward to you all returning in a few years. Thank you very much.
Send them a letter of thanks.
Absolutely.
For serving. Out of my motion.
Alright.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I know we're waiting, but Shay intends on being here, so we'll wait a few more minutes for that move on.
Jerry, in the meantime, I have something for you. A proclamation. Whereas Jerry D. Lawrence has volunteered his time in various roles for the town of West Bridgewater, including in-town government, as well as in local community organizations, not the least of which is the Lions Club of West Bridgewater. And whereas Jerry D. Lawrence was recently presented with the Senior Master Key and Medallion in recognition of his sponsorship of 25 members during his career as a Lion, introducing new members to his legacy of active membership and outstanding service to the community, as well as continuously exhibiting the values of Lionism. And whereas the Board of Selectmen congratulate Jerry D. Lawrence for attaining this distinction and continuing his distinguished public service and commitment to the town in this venture, and several other capacities, always thinking of ways to celebrate and benefit the community. Now, therefore, it is the great pleasure that we, the Board of Selectmen of the town of West Bridgewater, do hereby recognize Jerry D. Lawrence as an ideal public figure and pillar of this community. And further, we are extremely proud that Jerry D. Lawrence is a representative of West Bridgewater, and do commend him for his countless hours of dedication and devotion to the Lions and to our town. And I believe I might be one of those 25 members.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, you deserve it.
Thank you so much. How do you guys pull these things off where else am I going? Oh, where was I? Alright, yes. Act on the Sammlet Rod and Gun Club request for outdoor events. Mallory, you want to speak on this?
Sure. So the Sammlet Rod and Gun Club has four events. I believe most of them, they hold annually, if not all of them. And this year, they're hoping that they can actually allow food and beverage, beverages to be served on their outdoor patio, which I do believe is fenced in already, just a bonus. They are going to be taking the steps to file for site plan review, which is a requirement of our zoning bylaws, in order to allow their license premise to include the patio. But right now, they're asking for four specific days.
That, that special program will be on a, for a permanent basis?
They're looking to do it for a permanent basis.
Okay, great.
So in the meantime, they are asking for these four days this summer to be able to do that while they wait for their process, you know, their process through site plan review, which can be lengthy. There would have been no way for them to prepare their first event's Memorial Day. There would have been no way for them to complete the process by then, so...
Okay. Eldon, you're gonna...
Oh, I'm gonna abstain.
Mallory, one question. Their A, B, C violation was, that was, that's over with, right?
It is all settled. They, they settled it. They paid a fine in lieu of having to be suspended. One of their days to, they ordered, was, they were ordered to be suspended was around Memorial Day, but they've paid the fine, and that will not impact.
Clarification, that wasn't a liquor violation. That was something else. Okay. The only thing, the only thing I'd like to see is that they submit to you just a plan to make sure that there's crowd control or service control on the patio, and I would leave that up to you to, once you're satisfied, I'd be satisfied. That's, make that part of a motion, or move that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve as presenting with Mallory's approval of the security plan.
Okay. I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Alright, we have the meeting calendar presented tonight. As always, Eldon, I think you always add, subject to change.
Subject to change.
Alright, we have a motion, the...
Well, and also, did you want to discuss whether or not you want to set a date for the year employee appreciation?
Oh, yeah. Do you have any recommendations?
Um, August. Usually, usually you do it on a Friday, so your August Friday dates are August 4th, 11th, 18th, and 25th.
Okay, and all those dates are open for the senior center?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't see any issues.
Are there any other options for doing it other, somewhere else, somewhere different? You know?
There is, but I think we like the, we've, first year was planned at the town park, then it was canceled because of the rain, and we did it inside the highway line. Then we moved to the gazebo, because we wanted someplace central to be able to come in and out, because the town park doesn't have bathrooms.
So I, did you see the email from Kitty Darty about they're opening the museum that did whatever day for employees?
No, I didn't see that.
So would having it in the gazebo be an option?
Sure, I mean...
The museum can be open. I think Jim wanted to open the museum, so...
Nope, that's correct. Jim does want to open it in that day, so he was thinking that people would be able to obviously use it. The only thing to keep in mind is, is that there are some logistical issues, because you have to be able to grill and cook. We used to have a van to be able to bring the grill. I don't know as to whether or not that's still possible, but there are some difficulties with that, that the Council on Aging provided the current infrastructure for. But that doesn't mean that we couldn't somehow coordinate it. For example, maybe we, I don't know, I don't want to say we could have carpool over to the Council on Aging, but if we want to be able to say that we want to meet there and let everybody spend 20 minutes there, and then move on over to the Council on Aging, I'm sure we could try to, try to work that out.
If we could, if you, I don't know what exactly what Jim planned with the, with the historic, with the museum. Maybe if we can just get a report back at the next meeting, we'll hold that off.
Sure, and I mean, obviously, the other option is, is that, you know, we could ask the Council on Aging, can we just bring the grill up and bring the food up and...
It was nice having the refrigeration and everything.
It is, there's no doubt, especially since sometimes if it rains, we can go inside, or it's really hot, and if it's nice out, you could sit outside.
Right.
So it kind of has the best of both worlds.
I still think the senior of that, I mean, there's two different things here, and I think over here, you've got, you've got a long ways to go before they get that thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'm shy.
Maybe it's a good idea, and maybe in the future, we should look at it, but I think this year, we should go with the senior center.
Yeah, I agree for this year, until they...
Until they come up.
Do some cooperation with them next year, maybe.
Alright, so do you want to look at dates tonight, or do you want to vote on a, on a date next week, next meeting?
I'm okay. This, I think maybe the second Friday in the month?
Yeah, I think that was the 11th.
11th, okay.
It doesn't matter if we wait until next time, so I can check my calendar.
Yep, no problem. We'll set a tentative late. Subject to change.
Okay, I move the schedule, subject to change.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, moving on. Let's see. Prove special town meeting warrants. David?
Sure. So, we're very fortunate. Usually, all we need our special town meeting to do is to kind of do some cleanup, if you will. And we don't have any outstanding bills. We have no other outstanding issues, or at least nothing that's been brought to our attention yet. But with that said, we are only going to have to worry about one motion or article. The one article will be to cover our snow and ice deficit. The snow and ice deficit was about $256,000, just shy of. We have excess money left over in our benefits budget 9100, so the article would be to move $256,000 from our, our benefits budget to cover the snow and ice. So it's just that one motion, and that would be it for the entire special town meeting.
What was the total figure?
The tot, the total figure is three, $345,000 or so. We budget 91.3, and we went over by 255 and change.
Alright. I have a motion to sign the annual and special town meeting warrants.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just one note in reference to the annual meeting. You always take your votes subject to final tweaking and general council review. There was two motions that I just had to make a couple of minor modifications to on the numbers. There was a question posed in reference to an article that we were spending $50,000 on for our interim highway superintendent for a new truck. The question was posted as it come with a plow. The paperwork says that it's equipped for a plow. I thought that meant the plow was already there. It wasn't. The additional plow cost us $8,000. The, so we moved that article from $50,000 to $58.000. The second article is the school had a digital library resources request for $100,000. Upon further review, Dr. Oakley reviewed it and determined that she only needed $50,000. So we modified that from $100,000 to $50,000. So we took the difference, which is a net $42,000, and I moved that into the stabilization account, which would be good, because it'd be an extra $42,000 going into the bank.
David, not that I want to open up a whole bunch more work for you, but is the digital library anything that our town library could piggyback on, or I don't know if they've communicated about that, but...
Yep, what I can't, the digital library resources at the school is specific for a certification required to the state for the school.
Okay.
So because we have a library in the school, it would be specific to the school.
Okay. Alright, good. Alright, any other questions? I see Joni's here. Miss Shay, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Very good. Are you Brenda?
Hi, yeah.
Hi, Brenda, welcome.
Thank you.
Alright, we have Joni Shay and Brenda Sipatella.
Capiello.
Capiello, thank you.
You were close.
Uh, here for appointments on the ADA Committee as alternates. Do we, I thought we had one actual...
We don't. It's two alternates. However, many of these members, or at least one or two, are going to be removing themselves, and this is a great opportunity for these two to get on, because there is a training coming up in October. So these, the members that are currently serving want to go forward with this training, plan it, make sure it goes off without a hitch, and it's a great way for these two to learn, take over the new reins, and take off from it from there.
Well, Joan, I know you're a great advocate for special needs, but we'll give you both opportunity to introduce yourselves, and let us know a little bit about why you want to be on there, and a little bit about your background, if you don't mind?
Oh, you want to go first? You can go, go ahead. Okay. My name is Joan Shay. I actually grew up in the town. My parents moved here from New Jersey when I was seven, so went through the school system. I currently work at a human resources field at UPS. I've been there for 32 years. So a lot of stuff going on in the town lately, and I felt that it was important to become a voice and get involved a little bit more, switched over to a different role at work, so it gives me a little bit more flexibility than I've had in the past. I have family members who were mentally retarded and autistic, so understanding the needs of those individuals as they age is important. So I thought I'd try to get involved, and this opportunity popped up on Facebook, of all places. We find everything out. So I thought I'd throw my hat in the ring, and immediately got an email from Mallory, so... Because we got her. No, I'm just kidding.
Well, I can tell you about the numerous ADA and special needs correspondence I've gotten from Joan over the last year, year and a half, that her heart's definitely in the right place, and will definitely be a great advocate and a great addition to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bunny Capiello. I, I grew up in this town. I've lived here for many years. I too have a nephew who has Down Syndrome, so it's very important to me. I see the challenges that he has every single day. So just knowing the challenges that he has, and to be able to, you know, help make it so that his everyday challenges don't need to be any more of a challenge for him to go out and do what he needs to do.
But if you're available for the training, would you both be willing to go?
Yes.
Locked in for September.
Excellent. Wow, alright.
Movers and shakers.
Now we're the communicators.
That's right, and I should say that once these permanent members do move on, I expect that, and if they'd like to, it's totally their choice, but they would move on to their full membership.
And of course, we want your ears out there, listen for other people that may want to be advocates and, and help out. And I think we have some great businesses in town that deserve some recognition for the steps they've taken voluntarily. I know Bridgewater Savings Bank's one of them. They've, they've done a lot of work that, you know, on their own, not because of laws or requirements, but just because they want to do what's right. And I think, you know, something great your organization can do is recommend, is recognize those businesses in town and help them along when they need recommendations. So, that's great, very good. Board, have any questions?
Oh, I think it's great, because I, so on that committee too, and it's a great benefit. And it looks like we have a deep interest in it.
Thank you both for volunteering. We appreciate it.
Again, it's great. We, new faces to be, not new faces in town, but new faces being involved on, on committees and commissions. It's great. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion for the appointment?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you so much, and thanks to all coming in. Alright.
They're gonna be sworn in, right?
Yes, yep.
We'll send you letters, and then...
We'll send you letters, and then it gives you instructions to be sworn in, and then you're good to go, part of the committee. Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Review the FY eighteen committee appointments. We had asked that the list be available to the board, and it would be my recommendation that we just take the list into consideration and bring it up at our next meeting for appointments and consideration.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. David, surge contract award?
Sure. So before you, you have five contracts. As you know, we actually go, we do our procurement on these services through Searge. We put it out to bid every single year. It is part of nineteen other communities, so we're really able to drive the price down. It is for your water sewer treatment, DPW suppliers, paper office supplies, and DPW services. I would be looking for a motion to accept the contracts as presented, and then you would sign them as well.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Approve the minutes of meetings of April twelfth, thirteenth, nineteenth, twentieth of two thousand seventeen.
So moved.
All right, go ahead, second.
Eldon, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Accept the minutes for review.
So moved.
I'm sorry.
Second.
That's a May third. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Commonwealth Department of Agriculture, David?
Sure. So we've been contacted from the Commonwealth Department of Agricultural Resources. They have been in contact with the Demoles family who lives on the, who has a farm on the corner of Walnut Street and Manly Street. The state has offered them almost one-point-one million dollars in order to put an agricultural restriction on that property. That means that it will remain in sixty-one A land in perpetuity. It could not be developed and it could not be resold. This is not a typical sixty-one A purchase, meaning that we don't have a first right of refusal because there's no purchase and sale agreement. So the only way to be able to stop this is if we want to enter into negotiations and actually purchase the property, which obviously I know is there's, there's no intention for. So with that said, what the state is requesting is if the chair, on page sixty-three, you will see that there is a notice of proposed acquisition. By state law, you have to actually read this entire notice, so that way we are providing notice to all town residents of what the Commonwealth is intending to do.
All right. In compliance with Mass. General Law Chapter Seven, C, Section Thirty-seven, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts acting by, through its Department of Agriculture Resources, the department hereby give a notice that it is proposed the acquisition of Agricultural Preservation Restriction, A R C, on the real property identified herein from the purpose of protecting and the pertinency of its superior and productive agricultural resources by preventing their conversion to other use. The application received by the M D A R indicates that all property is owned by Edward C. in Maryland, Demoles. It consists of parcels located on Manly Street and Walnut Street, as approximately presented on the attached map. The A P R may encompass all or part of the area shown. The current use of the, of the property is primarily for livestock. Following the recommendation of A P R, the use of the subject property is limited to agriculture, I'm sorry, following the recording of the A P R, the use of the subject property is limited to agriculture use, as more particularly set forth in the A P R document, the General Law, Chapter One Eighty-four, Section Thirty-one, and the regulations of the department, Three Thirty, C M R, Twenty-two point zero.
So, thank you. So by reading that, the state is now going to be able to go forward and, to place an agricultural restriction. However, they cannot move within sixty days, or they cannot make the decision outside of one-hundred-and-twenty. So that's their window is sixty to one-twenty. If the board would be willing to consider, you will see on page sixty-five, there is a consent to reduction of notice period. If the board would be willing to allow the Commonwealth to make a decision within sixty days, then you would take a vote to allow for that, and you would sign this document as well. I mean, unless you think that there is somebody out there that is looking to try to purchase the property, then there would, in my opinion, there would be no need not to acquiesce to their request.
I believe this property's been for sale for years.
Yeah.
And there's been no action on it, though I, I don't think the board has any intent to buy an open space in the industrial park, especially that much for that parcel. But going forward, I would maybe like to ask the Department of Agriculture to not invest in our industrial area. That's our prime real estate for commercial and industrial development, and this is basically taking that parcel of property out of the inventory. I'm all in favor of preserving farms, but there's other farms in town and other areas that'd be great to preserve. Similar, like we've talked in the past, that using our industrial park for, for solar fields is, is not the best, best use of that land. I have no intent on trying to stop it. I think it's great that the state's doing it, just I don't like that area being eaten up when that's really where we need to focus our development.
I'd have to agree with what you said, Jerry. It's right in the, in our industrial area on Manly Street there, and it's a good portion of land. There's a lot of acres there. I know that we're trying to preserve the farms and everything else, but that's, seems to be in an area. But then again, the town don't have a million-plus...
And no one else is trying to buy it.
...to buy the thing, and there's nobody else to buy it, so we're, we're kind of boxed into a situation here. But, but the state...
Yep.
Probably didn't even take that into consideration, you know?
Yeah, a lot of it is on Walnut Street, which is all residential, or mostly residential at least. I know there was talk a while, like, years ago about a subdivision, like sixty houses or something, if I recall. So it's good that the state's doing it and we don't have to...
Yep. No, that's, that's, that's the good part. All right, anyone want to make a motion to waive the holdoff period?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Governor's race? David?
So this is not a road race. This is a proclamation from the governor. Governor Baker initiated it last year. It is a, basically, it's a proclamation on civility and race relations, and with the object of highlighting diversity of cultures in the state. So this is a proclamation that the governor has put out. He has requested that it be presented to all mayors and all Board of Selectmen throughout cities and towns. So it is here for your review. If you would, you know, it's really just an FYI. I don't know if you want to read it, just refer to it.
Did we get an actual proclamation? Or is it just electronic?
It was, Annie got it downstairs. She received it.
All right. I'd just like to make a motion that we have the proclamation posted in a highly visible area on the first floor of Town Hall. Was that a motion? Oh, I was entertaining the motion, but sure.
So moved.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And just so you know, she did post it downstairs.
Great, thank you. She's, she's ahead of the hall. That's good. Communication reports from boards, commissions, committees, town officials? I don't think we have any.
I just have one that I attended the new opening of the new DA's office on Main Street in Brockton, rise of headquarters of State Police, and it's quite a building. And I attended that last week, and, and now they got a brand-new facility up there and a lot more present of police in this area also in Brockton, and it certainly is a step forward.
Very good. As, okay, under public comment period, just a reminder, the Memorial Day service will be Monday, May twenty-ninth, at the War Memorial Park on River Street, starting at ten a.m. And we invite the public to come partake in the ceremony. Town administrators report, David?
Sure. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first, just an update on the purchase of River Ben.
Memorial Day Cemetery, it'll announce that. I don't know if you got that on yours?
At the cemetery?
Yeah.
At the town park?
Yeah.
Great idea.
That's Cemetery. Pine Hill Cemetery. You got, you got both that?
Oh. I didn't know about the one at Pine Hill, Eldon.
Yeah. Isn't that written in green there?
No, sir, that's the town park.
That was a note, I gave you two different notes. That was, you had requested some information on that one, so that's, I gave that to you.
Okay, I have it here.
Okay.
But that's going to be at nine-thirty in June eleventh. That's the pack. They read the, the names of deceased firefighters.
Oh, that's the firefighter in the morning. Oh, okay, all right. Thank you.
What time, Eldon?
Uh, nine-thirty. That's something, sometimes goes overlooked there, and we get it a late thing, but I reminded Dave and also Stacy on the, I know that was coming up in June. And he sometimes forgets to get ahold of us, and, you know, the last minute, trying to get something together. Okay.
Very good. Thank you. All right, David?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, just an update on the purchase of River Ben Country Club. We have called a special Board of Selectmen's meeting for next Wednesday, May twenty-fourth. The intent of that meeting will be for, for the board to sign whatever borrowing documents that the treasurer will have for you. We are currently out to bid at this point, and so John will have all of the information next week as to what our interest rate is. You will sign those borrowing documents on the twenty-fourth. Those documents then will go to the Department of Revenue for their review and approval, and we anticipate that the money then will become available on June first. That means that we would be looking at a closing of June second. I'm hoping to have a conversation with each one of you individually over the next week or two, but what I'm looking to do is that on June second, to probably have some type of a celebratory event at River Ben, where we actually hand over the key from the current owner to the Board of Selectmen. So I just wanted to put that out there. I don't know if you want to discuss it now as a board, or I'll just continue to talk directly with Jerry and get ahold of each one of you individually.
David, the Selectmen's meeting that night for the signing conflicts with the awards and senior scholarship banquet at the school. Could we do it rather, maybe an hour late, outside at eight o'clock, or is that...[1573.15]